I'd like to welcome you to tonight's public hearing. Before we get started, please turn off your cell phones or any other electronic devices to avoid any interruptions. Anyone who wants an opportunity to speak tonight will have the time to do so. Please step up to the podium when it's your turn and make sure you clearly identify yourself for the record before you begin your testimony. We also request that you please keep your testimony focused on the relevant issues and facts for each application. Please remember these hearings are to allow for members of the public to speak on issues related to land use applications, not to air grievances about each other or your neighbors. We will not tolerate or allow testimony that's hateful in nature and will stop your testimony if it delves into a statement on other people's character. Okay, it is Wednesday, the sixth day of November. The time is six o'clock, the time set for our public hearing. All three commissioners are present. I would ask the clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
No changes to the agenda. All right, good enough. We will start our meeting today with unfinished business. We tabled the item at our last meeting, and in order to consider this, we need to take this off the table. I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I will open the public hearing on application 2024-01689-VCU-MSP Bluebird Solar Project LLC. We will ask our staff, Amelia, to give us an update and after which we will hear from the sponsor. Go ahead, Amelia.
Chairman Commissioners, project number 2024-01689-V-CU-MSP is a conditional use and master site plan application for a centralized power facility in the form of a solar farm with a variance to grant relief from coverage standards. The project is generally located east of Interstate 84, north of Blacks Creek Road. The project will encompass approximately 626 acres of private land, all located in the Rural Preservation District. The project area is located about 10 miles south of Boise City limits and is not located within an area of city impact. It is in Prosklup's proximity to the Oregon Trail and the Bonneville Point Monument Park. This solar farm is part of a larger solar project that was approved in February of this year and encompassed more property to the north of the site. It also included a portion of state land that was visible by the residential neighborhoods along Columbia Road. Part of that project included a condition that the northern portion of the project would be screened from view of the residents. This first application will be referred to as Bluebird Phase One, and the existing project before you is Bluebird Phase Two. Bluebird One was an application for a solar farm as well as a battery storage facility and substation. Bluebird Two also had battery storage facilities and substations in their application, but it was regarded as an alternative location for these facilities rather than having double the battery storage and substations on the same solar farm. Upon revisions, the battery storage facility and substation were removed from Bluebird Two and will be located solely on the already approved Bluebird One boundary. County code classifies the solar farm as a centralized power facility, which requires conditional use approval. The variance is required due to the solar arrays being included in the coverage calculations, of which the Rural Preservation District only allows for a maximum of 5%. The first phase, Bluebird Phase One, also requested this same variance and received In order to grant approval of a variance, three findings must be met. The variance is not a special right or privilege that is not otherwise allowed in the base district, that the variance relieves an undue hardship due to characteristics of the site, and that the variance is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. The variance meets the first two findings due to the first phase already being granted the same variance, and that the arrays themselves are unique and allow the ground to still be permeable, unlike structures with a foundation. The viability of a solar farm also needs a significant amount of land in order to be viable as an alternative energy source, which would not be possible while remaining under the 5% coverage standard. The variance is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare as long as it complies with the conditions of approval requested by agencies concerned with the public health, safety, and welfare. Regarding agency comments, we received several that expressed concerns that will be addressed by conditions of approval. Like the first phase, a decommission plan will be required to address how the site will be reclaimed once the solar farm has reached its ends of use. Our engineer is requiring a drainage plan and detailed site plan showing dry aisles and width between arrays. Like Bluebird One, they are required to prepare a wildfire mitigation plan with the Idaho State Fire Marshal. We also received comments from agencies that brought up concerns with the natural features of the site. A natural features analysis is required for all master site plan applications and was provided in the initial submittal that addressed most concerns, apart from the sensitive plant and wildlife species, historic resources, and impacts on natural features. Idaho Department of Fish and Game commented that the site is within the wintering habitat of several big game species such as pronghorn, elk, and mule deer, which is detailed in the figure provided by IDFG. The solar project could impact these species by pushing them out of this area for their wintering range, possibly onto the nearby highway. Wildlife corridors are an option to explore. Unfortunately, there is not enough research to determine how wide these wildlife corridors have to be in order for big game species to utilize them. The application is conditioned to create a wildlife mitigation plan, which could include mitigation efforts such as minimizing fencing, protection of native plant species, and other efforts by working with IDFG to minimize these impacts. We also received comments from the Idaho State Historic Society and Ada County Historic Preservation Council that raised concerns about the impact of the new two nearby historic resources, the Oregon Trail and the Bonneville Point Monument Park. The solar farm will be visible from the View Site at Bonneville Point and from portions of the Oregon Trail. This is the view from the Bonneville View Site, which is known to be the first view into the valley from explorers that would give city of Boise its name. This view is pointing towards the west where the project site is located. Portions of the project are relatively close to the Oregon Trail. While there is a congressionally designated Oregon Trail as labeled on the map, the Oregon Trail is a historic trail used by settlers, and before that it was used by Native Americans for generations prior. The Oregon Trail has many offshoots, which may be located within the project boundaries. A condition of approval would be an archaeological survey of the site, an inadvertent discovery plan, and signs near the congressionally designated Oregon Trail to make sure there are no accidental trespass. As for the views from these locations, staff has determined that while views would be impacted, it would not be a large impact. The area that the project is closest to, about a half mile down the Oregon Trail from Bonneville Point, would not have the view impacted that much due to elevation differences. Ultimately, as shown in the comment from Idaho Power in Exhibit 34, Idaho has a need for more sources of alternative energy, and the solar farm would bring a needed source of solar power for the Treasure Valley. Staff is recommending approval of this project as conditioned, though the board should take into consideration all testimony presented at this hearing. This presentation will be known as Exhibit 42, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions from the commission? Go ahead.
From the map, or from the picture it showed, if you go back to the picture where it showed, I think the last one. No, actually the map. That one. So, the Oregon Trail is right just to the top, that line there, right?
Yes.
So, when they're doing the construction, they're not going to impact the Oregon Trail either, correct?
Not the congressionally designated Oregon Trail, no.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a difference?
There may be historic offshoots since there's not one sole trail. Because it's so old, there are lots of different other alternative trails that have been used in the past, but there's only one congressionally designated trail.
Oh, okay. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you. Is the applicant here, Max? Go ahead. Good evening.
Thank you for the chance to come and talk about our Bluebird Two project. My name's Rachel Walker, and I'm the Director of Permitting at Mission Clean Energy. And I'm excited to tell you why this project makes sense for Ada County. The need, its benefits, and our due diligence. First, as was just noted by staff, there is a huge need for power. We received a letter of support from Idaho Power suggesting how much this project is needed. They need a project of this size in this location. Secondly, this project will bring sizable benefits to the community. We must pay an obligation of $50 million in tax obligations for this project over the life of the project. And third, for a project this size, it has very minimal environmental impact. It's essentially made out of steel and glass, sits on the landscape, it emits nothing into the air, leaches nothing into the ground, minimal moving parts, essentially no noise. I'm going to introduce our team today, going to talk about more of the details for a few minutes, and then we'll take your questions. I'm joined tonight by our Head of Development, Audrey Copeland. I'm joined by our developer, Jessie McNeil, joined by Ethan Frazier, our permitting manager, and by our Senior Permitting Associate, Madison Sanders. So, we do a lot of due diligence. This process of development is extremely long, and I want to just give you two quick examples. So, nine months ago, on Valentine's Day, we came and we asked for a permit from you for our Bluebird One project, and we received it, and we thank you for that. At that hearing, we heard from people, and we listened very carefully to feedback. So, we heard from them, and we heard from other stakeholders, and we incorporated that, and we have today moved this project substantially to the south away from many of the folks who spoke at that last hearing. And we want to very much highlight that, how much we take into account what people tell us, and that's a very good example. Number two, we have met with many of the agencies that were described with respect to the cultural and wildlife issues. So, we have met with Idaho Fish and Game. We have met with the State Historic Preservation Office, the Ada County Historic Council. We've met with them many times. We have listened to them, we have taken into account their suggestions, and we will talk more about some of the details related to the surveys that we have completed. I want to remind you, this is a project that's entirely on private land, but we know how important it is for project success to be in sync with a community. So, we listen carefully, and we incorporate that information. So, in sum, we have a project that this community needs to meet the power needs of this community. It has clear financial benefits, and it respects community and agency process and requirements. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ethan, who will give you a few more details about the project. Thanks.
Thank you, Rachel, and thank you, Commissioners, again. I'd like to echo what Rachel said previously. Appreciate the permit the last time, and appreciate the opportunity to present in front of you again. Also, like to echo that thanks to Ada County's Development Services staff. They've been great guiding us through this process, both with our first application and this one. Amelia, you think the clicker's going to work here? Okay. Perfect. Yeah, there we go. Wanted to quickly go over some kind of questions you might have remaining from either our last presentation, since it's been a while, and then also going into our project here. Just kind of as a brief background of who we are, Mission Clean Energy is utility-scale solar and battery storage developer. We've grown since even the last time we were here and expanded our project portfolio to include more of the projects that you see represented in front of that graphic on the slide. Work basically coast to coast, north to south. There's really no part of the country that we don't potentially see opportunities or at least consider. Amelia already shared some of this information earlier, but if you remember back to February, we were permitted for the project site design that you see in front of you and that the county showed earlier. Like Amelia noted previously, we have removed kind of the most contentious piece of that prior site plan, moving everything farther from existing residences and closer to what we view as more compatible uses. So, gravel pits and even further away from grazing that exists currently further to the west. So, got further away from residences, got basically further away from the county as a whole, and really tried to make this something that everybody could at least be happy and supportive of as much as they could. Again, in front of you today is just this Phase Two of the project outlined there in black. Won't go over the benefits in full again, but the location, I think, is important to note that we are avoiding any prime farmland, irrigated parcels, and we're utilizing existing utility infrastructure with the high voltage transmission lines that litter the area. Rachel had hinted at our due diligence, but I do want to spend some time going over it a bit more substantially. Everything that you see represented with the checkmarks to the left is work that we've already completed. That includes consultation with both IDFG numerous times, a meeting with ISHS and SHPO to inform our studies, and also with the condition of approval to do additional study and survey. We've done numerous meetings with county staff and stakeholders, including our neighborhood meeting with a mile buffer notice for this one, and then continue expectations to have more of that discussion in the future, as you see there on the right. So, that includes preconstruction surveys for cultural resources and habitat, as well as putting together all of those various plans that are noted within our conditions of approval. A very easy-to-understand map that we put together here shows the neighboring uses surrounding the property. Again, this parcel is shown there, kind of the unshaded area in the middle, and then that cream kind of colored shape is a mile buffer around that project site. Within that mile buffer, there are two residences that we notified as part of our neighborhood meeting, and we're lucky enough to be able to meet and have a great discussion with one of those landowners that showed up to our neighborhood meeting. Aside from that, there's a couple of gravel pit operations in the area, and then the Oregon Trail and Bonneville Point that the county noted previously. A concern that we noted from the last meeting was about View Shed, a simulation that we ran from the north with the residences. Considering this view is shown here. With the project put in, this is the view that they would get from the north. So, as you can see, a very, very minor shift that would depend largely on exactly where you are in that point, but the hill covers the vast majority of those panels. So, really, under most normal conditions, you shouldn't be able to see them or even understand they're there at all. We did run additional visual simulations from a variety of places. Amelia, can you click into these? I don't know if it's going to play automatically if I just run the clicker. It should just be a video, and if it doesn't work, we can work through that. Okay, links to the Google Drive. We did have additional visual simulations from both the north, the west, and the south, but if you're aware of the topography of those areas, coming off the highway, there's kind of a significant hill that covers those panels, and then from the south where most of those gravel pits enter, there's again a pretty severe elevation in most of the area to where the panels would be on the far side of that. So, from the roadway, you really wouldn't be seeing them. You just clicked me past all the images here. Clicker's not working there. If we're approved today, we would keep more or less the same development schedule that we brought up last time we were here in February. We're currently within the development phase where the discretionary permits have been a deal for us. Following this, we'd go work with financiers to be able to fund, build the project. Construction would be about 12 to 18 months, likely somewhere in the middle, and then once operational, the project would basically sit. Aside from maintenance or emergency services, no one would be entering or exiting the facility. It also would need very little water use that we would get from hydrants around the area for basically just panel washing. Thank you again for allowing us the opportunity, and again, thank you to the county for your support throughout this. We are here. If you have any more additional questions for us as the Bluebird permit team.
Sure, thank you. I do have a question.
Yep.
You indicated in your material that your project will generate $50 million in taxes. Could you explain how we're going to do that?
Yeah, I will actually let our Head of Development, she knows the economics a little better than myself does as a permit person, so I'll cede the floor here to our Head of Development, Audrey Copeland.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Do we have a slide on this one?
Could you identify yourself for the director?
Yeah, so my name is Audrey Copeland. I'm the Head of Development at Mission Clean Energy.
Thank you.
So, that tax revenue forecast, I don't believe we have it in the slides, but that is managed at the state level. There is a little bit of an abatement for renewable energy projects, and then the rest of that is calculated outside of that abatement. Do we have a slide on this one? We don't have. We don't have a slide, but we're happy to follow up with the full calculation. It's a form actually that's provided by the state that, you know, you can put in the size of your project. It looks at the total amount of generation, and then it calculates from there the taxes.
Is that based on income tax? Is it based on property tax?
It's a property.
Property tax?
Yeah.
Okay. And what do you calculate as the life of the project?
So...
Jessie, do you have the details?
Yeah. Apologies, we didn't have a slide on this. We normally do, so apologies. Do you want to speak a little bit more to the calculation?
Commissioners, Jessie McNeil with Mission Clean Energy. For solar projects, rather than a property tax, there's a property tax on some aspects of the project, for example, the battery energy storage system, but for the solar portion of the project, there's a 3.5% gross revenue tax. So, that is where the bulk of the $50 million figure comes from.
The 3.5%?
Of gross revenue.
But what's the duration? For the life of the project? Is it five years? Is it 100 years? Or what's the...
We model a 40-year project lifespan.
40-year, okay, 40-year. Okay, do you have a decommissioning plan?
I can speak to that. Yes, so, we have written into the stipulations of conditions of approval is to put in place a decommissioning plan with the county, the county staff. So, that's one of the conditions. We have forms of those if they're needed, or we can work with staff. Typically, a third-party engineer assists in that effort, coming up with the value, and then for the decommissioning bond, and then we put in place the decommissioning plan. So, those two things go typically hand in hand.
All right. I have one more question before I move on, and that's the 3.5% of gross revenues tax, that's how you got the $50 million. Is that 3.5% revenue percent on just this project, or is it on the one that we already approved in February?
It's the combined edited version, essentially, where we've removed a portion. It is the actual project that we intend if we receive approval.
So, it's... Okay. And have you started construction on the one that we approved in February?
We have not started construction. This is, in many ways, an update where we listened to the concerns. We've removed the northern section, and we're seeking approval of this additional piece as Bluebird to, to move that section of that site to this new private land location.
All right, thanks. Any questions from, Ms. Quaid?
I have a couple of questions. Follow-up from the, from the tax question. So it's basically a million dollars a year, but it's revenue, most of it's revenue tax, three-and-a-half percent revenue tax.
That's right, yes.
So it's, so it's based on negotiation or discussions with Idaho Power in terms of the revenue that's going to be generated? And that's an estimate?
I'm going to call up the project developer again, who worked on the tax model.
Commissioners, yes, we worked with a third-party entity who does tax models for their, their profession. And yes, we were, we use numbers from discussions with Idaho Power to model that 3.5%.
Follow-up.
Go ahead.
So then, it would be to the state. It wouldn't be to the county. It would be to the state of Idaho, the revenue tax.
That's a good question. I'd have to get back to you on that one.
And then, follow-up question is, so what, what part of the $50 million, basically a million dollars a year, would be property tax? Do you know the answer to that?
So this particular program is in lieu of the substantial addition to property tax. So my understanding, it does go to the county. We can confirm the exact mechanism of how that works. Apologies that we don't have the buttoned-up answer here today.
All right, thank you.
Question. Well, we can send that to county staff, and if you give us a minute, we can, we can look for that answer as we're going through other items.
All right, thank you. Is there any other questions from the Commission? You have a question?
I have some more, but defer to that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Can you talk about the historical nature of the site and what some of your, your plans to address that are?
Right, so we've worked with the preservation group here in Idaho, and we have met with them. They've requested that we do a preconstruction survey. We've done a desktop survey thus far, and we have not found significant artifacts on the site from that kind of review of the existing records. We will go ahead and do that full cultural review prior to construction. If we were to find artifacts on the site from the, maybe because of the existing kind of adjacent Oregon Trail, we would work around those in the site design. So that is, that would be the plan there.
All right, thank you.
My question relates to that as well. When, when the, back to what the staff said, it was a designated Oregon Trail by the Congress. When Congress designated the Oregon Trail, they actually did a survey of every mile, and there's a, I don't know if you've used that as your, and they, each one of those miles, they designated the sites as things that probably should be done to protect the Oregon Trail, every mile of the Oregon Trail. So have you looked at that report, and are you using that in, in your analysis of what you're going to do?
I'm going to have our Director of Permitting talk a little bit about our work with our cultural consultant.
Yeah, actually, I'm familiar with the Oregon Trail because I, in a previous job, I also had to do, I had to permit a project that was also near the Oregon Trail. I'm not familiar with that exact report that you're describing, but we are working very closely with our cultural consultants, and they are very well-versed in all of the information that's available for the Oregon Trail. So our plan is to take their advice along with any input from SHPO and make sure that we analyze whether it's the exact congressional trail or it's offshoots a bit to make sure we're not missing anything. We're, we're, we're set back from the Oregon Trail, but we, we will absolutely do what is felt to be necessary to make sure we're not missing anything. And you know, the inadvertent discoveries plan that we always do, that's really the most important thing, because you can do a survey, but until you get into construction, you don't really know what you're going to find. By having this inadvertent discoveries plan in place during construction, if something gets discovered, then it's reported and it's dealt with in a very systematic way. So actually, to me, that is one of the most critical plans that you would have in place, and we do those just as a matter of course.
Okay. Just as, just as an aside, Mr. Chairman, the, in reading the journals of people that have gone along the Oregon Trail, some of the children actually wandered off quite a ways because your, the wagons go very slowly, or did go very slowly, and so they just played along the way and sometimes wandered away quite a bit from where they're... So there are a lot of things around the Oregon Trail, I guess is my point, that may or may not be there. But would you be the one to ask the question about the wildlife and the vegetation studies?
Yes, you can ask me that.
The, the, the point that they showed, can you show that where they had the green dots on the, on the wildlife?
From the staff presentation?
Right, on the staff presentation.
Yes, one moment.
Yeah, that one. So what, what, what are all those green dots designated?
Yeah, my understanding, that, that was from the Idaho Fish and Game, and it is several species of big game, I believe, and I'm sorry, don't have them memorized, are they mule deer? They are in the legend. So it's...
Pronghorn antelope.
Pronghorn, thank you very much. I'm sorry, I didn't have that memorized. It, it's these several species, and it is, it came from the Idaho Fish and Game Department. So these are sightings, these are like incidents, and I think that, you know, in some ways, the dots, you know, there's supposed to be like one incident, yeah. And so what we did is we have met with, again, our consultants, they're named, they're called the Western Ecosystems Incorporated, or short, they're called West. And these are sort of some of the leading big game ecologists in the country. And we sat down with them, and we talked through a design that would allow for those corridors that go from north to south and east to west across the whole project. He was very pleased when we worked with our engineer to kind of, and we have a more granular map to show. We have quite wide corridors. As Amelia pointed out early in her staff report, it's still scientifically not known exactly how wide is adequate for big game to get across, but our ecologist said, wow, you guys have corridors that are between 100 and 600 feet wide, and I don't typically see that. So not only do we have free-flowing pathways across our project, we also have access to water. And so those were kind of the two big conclusions, and we're happy to share those findings with, we'll share them with agencies and also share them with staff.
Couple of other questions?
Go ahead.
So it's just over the hill from Lucky Peak, as you can see on the map, but, so the wildlife corridors, you said water was available on the site as well as?
There is some, my understanding, some kind of ponds related to some of the grazing. I mean, there's some places where there can get, there is water, yeah.
And another question.
Go ahead.
The slick spot pepper grass, that whole area is potential there, so they, they've reviewed that.
Correct.
Fish and game has reviewed, or Fish and Wildlife have reviewed.
And we also have done our own survey. We did not find any individuals of slick spot pepper grass. We said we were happy, so we've already done one survey. We might, in fact, do yet another one, because we know how important that species is, and, but we, but none were found. We do know that there's potential habitat there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Let's see. Did you, is there any federal land around there? This is on private land, you said.
It's all on private land. There is no federal land.
So, but, okay, availability of that. Let's see, one more question. The decommissioning plan that the, that the chairman asked about?
Yeah.
Because you indicated in, in your presentation that it was basically steel and glass.
Correct.
But there are other component parts on there that could be special metals or that sort of thing in, in solar panels, that, that's my understanding anyway. How, how would those be dealt with in the decommissioning plan?
Yeah, we're happy to share with you the kind of breakdown, and we have some very nice slides. We don't have them here today. Absolutely. These are increasingly, what's great is that the recycling stream is getting more and more robust, and you're absolutely right, that there are pathways for all of these parts to be recycled. There's a lot of value in, in the, in the project at the end of life. So all parts of it, almost, nearly almost all of the parts will be recycled or sold. And in fact, and, and the site will be completely taken down, and we will restore it back to its original site as we are required to do. And it, that is very much a part of a decommissioning plan. And then there is money aside to make sure that that happens.
That was my next question. You anticipated my next question?
Uh huh, yeah.
Make sure there's money available to do all of that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
How much actual excavation are you doing at the site?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to address that. So the technology that we use on a site like this is a train-following tracker. That is a technology that allows us to follow the natural topography. So our layout stays out of some of the higher sloped areas, if you kind of look at a map, that are above the kind of tolerance that we can have for a train-following tracker, and then the rest of it follows the terrain. So underneath the modules, the water will flow roughly how it flows today. So it's very little excavation, mainly the project substation that we would build for this project, and a project switchyard that would be located near the, the line where we need to put concrete slab. And then we drive piles, which are the actual posts of the, the modules into the ground. So we're not planning a lot of dirt-ming work at the site. Do we have the mission slide deck? Okay. We have an image of it. Happy to show it. It is in our slide deck. If you give us a minute. Are there other questions? I'll, I'll pull it up here. Okay, let's see here. Okay. There we go. Okay, so this is a, a good example of a train-following tracker. So you see that it kind of hugs the, the earth there, and then it allows, during construction, there will be some disturbance of plants, obviously, because we have to put the posts in. Once those are in, we let that vegetation grow a bit around there, and then we, we manage around that site. We make sure vegetation doesn't grow over the modules and shade them.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
One more, one more question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
That picture of the solar panels, where is that?
Ooh, I, I would have to...
Somewhere around here, around in Idaho.
Yeah, we, we try and pick a location that is somewhere in this area. It's not an exact, you know, representation of the site itself. You've got more shrubbery and bushes out in this area, yeah. It also allows smaller animals to move throughout. We were talking a little bit about IDFG. We, we did, we do have some slides on this, so I think it's worth sharing. I know that, that Rachel addressed this verbally, but this is actually a layout that we have started discussing. This would obviously get worked out a bit more as part of the conditions of approval, but you can see in the spaces that we're not utilizing. Those are transmission corridors or topography that's just not suitable for development. Our plan is to make those available for, for the quarters.
Actually, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
In seeing that map, so you could, you could, then, if you find something along the Oregon, if there are situations you could adjust the array?
Right, we, we have a little bit, we, we like to leave a little bit of space. It's very common in these projects to do preconstruction surveys. Archaeological surveys are one of those. We do our desktop, and then closer to construction, we'll do the full survey. Yeah, we have space to kind of work around things if we find anything.
All right, any other questions from the Commission? All right, thank you.
Let me just check if they have the answer to the tax question. Pulling up his model, hold on.
Jesse, are you prepared to discuss it, or do you want to just send it as follow-up?
Excuse me, I think we need a little more time.
Okay. Apologies that we don't have a button-up response. We will send you the third-party tax model. We'll send that to county staff to share with you. And there are benefits to the county, exactly how that flows through from the way it's calculated, we'll get you the full breakdown.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
You might have time in the rebuttal, I guess, if we bring them up.
Okay. Okay, and we can maybe even show the model. Give us a minute.
If you, if you find anything, we don't even know if we have anybody wants to testify, yeah. No one signed up to testify on this one. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify on this, on this application? Looks like we do. Give us your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Tanner Mills. I live at 1109 South Leadville Avenue in Boise. I just have a couple of comments about the estimated tax revenue. The numbers that were given in the statement was $1.25 million in tax revenue at 3.5% of the gross revenue. And if you do the math on it, assuming that they sell the power to Idaho Power at the residential rate of 10 cents a kilowatt, they would have to be able to produce 357 gigawatts of power in one year, if my math is correct. And so I'm hoping to see a breakdown of their tax representation. Over 40 years, I don't think that that's feasible to generate $50 million in tax income based off of the amount of power that they would need to produce, especially considering they only have four gigawatts in production right now, based off their slide. That's all.
Yeah, any questions? All right, thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishes to testify? I don't hear any. You can take a few minutes for rebuttal, and if you can answer, answer that question, it'd be helpful. Go ahead. Bring the applicant.
It's, it's here on a, I'm trying to see if I can, sure, okay. I think we're going to have to...
So Commissioners, I think we're going to have to send this to staff as a follow-up so you can view it, because it's on a separate computer. But I've got the calculations here. This is a third-party that does tax projections all over the country for renewable and also other projects, that prepared this tax summary for us. And they used the project life, and then they took an estimated amount that would be negotiated as revenue with Idaho Power. That has not been fully cemented, but somewhere in the range of what the expectation would be. They went through the, the various pieces of this, and then the, the estimated property tax, which is personal property, so that's one particular item that we have on here, and then the gross earnings from the solar, and then they have that down to the years here. So the estimated property tax is based on the taxable value. This is the best component of the project. So that adds up to the 17.2 million. So the battery storage is not covered by the Idaho program that has this separate generation-based gross revenue. That's 17.276 million. And then we've got the gross earnings, and I apologize, I don't know exactly how that benefits the county, and we will follow up on that. That is 36.57. So those are the combined total that gets you to the $50 million that we were noting on the slide. And the property tax is based on calculation of the rate and all of those things. Again, third-party prepared, happy to send it to, to staff. So for sure, the battery component of the project would have a direct benefit of property tax to the county.
Well, to every taxing district.
What was that?
Well, it would be to every taxing district. We don't have a property tax just for the county.
Sure. Thank you for the correction, Commissioner.
A question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, the, based on, you showed the, you have an array of places that you've actually built or are building. The tax question that we're asking, I know, I know each jurisdiction has its own variety of taxes, but that's where you've come up with your estimates as well, is based on your record in other places, how you calculate the tax?
So here in... So, here in the state of Idaho, it's very prescribed, because we have the state program for the solar generation, that's that gross revenue component, and then the rest is just property tax. And there's no kind of local abatement ability here around the property tax. In some localities, some localities on the East Coast, we can do agreements around the property tax more directly with the county, but this is actually based on the current, you know, estimated value of the project and the estimated generation. This is what we expect the project to generate as revenue, tax benefit.
All right, thank you.
So, the 17 million for sure. We'll follow up on the balance of that. Thank you, commissioners.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
So, this would be more of a question for staff, but I'm assuming there's nothing in the agreement that, you know, requires a minimum amount of generation, minimum amount of revenue that they need to produce in order to be approved?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I don't believe our code delves into that, that aspect, to be primarily up to the parties in Idaho Power on what those terms are.
So, we're gonna vote for this just based on the sort of theoretical projection of what they're bringing in, whether they're, I mean, they're stating it correctly. Obviously, it's an estimation, but if they're overestimating, underestimating, we don't really take that into consideration.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, I believe, yeah, we're focusing on the zoning, the land use entitlements, not necessarily the specific on, specifics on how much is energy's generated, revenue, taxes. It's focused on just land use and compliance with our zoning ordinance.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions before we close out the hearing? No. Okay, if there's no other questions, is there any documents need to be added to the file?
Yes, the applicant's presentation will be entered in as exhibit number 35.
Okay.
Forty-three, sorry.
Forty-three.
Forty-three.
All right, no other documents, all right. Then I'll close the public hearing on application 2024-01689-V-CU-MSP, Bluebird Solar Project. And it's up to the commission now. What are we gonna do with this one? Got any ideas? I'd accept the motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, based on the testimony I've heard tonight, I think the applicants have done a pretty good job to address issues that were raised at the previous hearing. I am willing to make a motion to approve the plan, and then we can have some more discussion. But I will move to approve application number 202401689-V-CU-MSP, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and the testimony we've heard this evening.
I second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the application, and I would just add the following. Inasmuch as we are only discussing land use and not really gross revenue, but I would ask the applicant to provide the information to our staff, so we can understand that, because right now, I'm a little confused. But it has nothing to do with your application, because your application is about land use. So, in that regard, then, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, next up, we'll have a new business. We'll have, I'll open a public hearing on application 2023-01377-ZCDAMSP. Frederick Long. We'll ask our staff. Leon will give us an update and report. Go ahead, Leon.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. Let me get it pulled up here real quick, one second.
They shouldn't give us that kind of information. Let's have the detail to back it up, I think. It doesn't have anything to do with land use, but it's sure...
It is what's relevant, but not in our decision.
Well, Chairman Commissioners, you'll have to forget the statement on our final slide. This version of PowerPoint doesn't let me make a quick modification, so I'll clear it up when we get there, but it's not a big deal. So, Chairman Commissioners, the item before you is a zone change development agreement and master site plan. Let me share my screen real quick, one second. All right, there we go. So, as I mentioned, it is a zone change development agreement and a master site plan for a self-service storage facility. The applicant is Frederick Long. The site pictured here is a 20-acre property located on the north side of Cuna-Mora Road and east of the South Curtis Road intersection. To the west is a police training facility. To the north is state-owned land, which is undeveloped. To the east is a vacant piece of rangeland that had approval for a single-family home on it at one point, but that has since expired. And to the south is a rural residence. Pictured here is the project as proposed by the applicant, and they have marked in one detail here that I'll go over a little bit more, but it includes 1,233 RV parking spaces. The building there, identified by the arrow, is 500 square feet of covered storage as well. They had proposed a 24-hour facility with key-listicated entry. They may have a change to that, as we spoke last time, and I'll let them speak to that for you. But there's no specific condition of approval allowing that, but that is what they initially proposed. And then for screening, they've used solid fencing along the front and a portion of the sides, and then they've proposed a fabric-covered chain link for the remainder of the sides and the rear of the project. So, pictured here is the future land use map associated with the property. They've been at this for a while. They had to go to Cuna and change the land use map in Cuna before they could come to us, so that we could recognize it as industrial and make this project make sense. Formerly, it had been designated as agriculture in Cuna's land use map, and so they had to go work that out through the comp plan. However, Cuna was very much in support of redesignating the property as industrial, and that kind of makes sense when you look at some of the surrounding properties in the area, particularly to the west and the south. Those are industrially designated properties. And at the north is public-owned land, as I mentioned before, and it has the designation in Cuna as public. And then east is more agricultural property. Here is the zoning for the property. So, surrounded by RP, there's a little bit of RR in close proximity to the east, but then you'll notice the gray is industrially, industrial zoning. And so, both those are actually designated, or are zoned industrial at this point, and then this is designated industrial, as well as this. So, the request for industrial zoning here was supported by staff based on not only the comprehensive plan associated with the property, but also the land uses and zoning occurring in the area. Terms of agency comments, our community and regional planning team noted that it is in compliance with Cuna's comprehensive plan, and I've gone over that already. City of Cuna also was in support of the project and just noted that, you know, when the time comes to annex in the future, they can talk in greater detail about any changes in terms of land use or zoning, but at this point, they have no objections to the project. The Health District has no objections as well, and typical of the Health District, if there is going to be any restroom or plumbing requiring septic in the future, they'd have to work with the Health District to get that approved. And then finally, our Ada County engineer had no objections and requested some standard conditions of approval. I will note Ada County Highway District also weighed in on this. They have some right-of-way dedication requests and some other improvements to the road that they've asked the applicant to make, and the applicant is aware of those as well. In terms of public comments, there were none, so not difficult for us to support the project based on that. In terms of the findings associated with the project, as mentioned, we found it to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan, as well as the section of code governing zoning ordinance, map amendments, development agreements, master site plans, the specific use standards for self-service storage facilities, as well as the Wildland Urban Fire Interface section of code. And this is a slide that I was trying to modify, but staff and both the Planning and Zoning Commission are recommending approval of the project. P&amp;Z met on this last month and recommended approval, and so that second bullet point was, should go away. But both staff and P&amp;Z are recommending approval of the project, and I'll stand for any questions.
All right, any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Did I hear you correctly, 1,000 RVs?
Yeah, 1,233 RV parking spaces. It's a 20-acre site. Yeah.
Follow-up question?
Go ahead.
So, you indicated that there are no plans now for any kind of sewage or water. Do they have a water right? First question. And secondly, what would be the process for them if they needed to, they would have to go through an approval process if they wanted to build something to work using water and/or sewage on that site, right?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioner, I don't have any knowledge of the water right that the property may have, and I could let the applicant speak to that if they have any knowledge. To your point, if they were to create a drain field on-site and need a well area, they could work through a modification process that we have in our code to allow them to likely remove some of the parking spaces to create those. Health District doesn't usually like it when you park on top of your drain field, so, but yeah, at this point, they're not proposing any of those facilities.
But there would be a process if they wanted to.
Yes, yeah, they could go through our administrative modification process to update the master site plan to reflect portions of the parking spaces removed that would allow for those facilities.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the commission? Okay, thank you. We'll take public comments, as Mr. Fred Long here.
Evening, commissioners. My name is Vince Boudel, and I work for Mr. Long. I'll be the project manager, once this is approved. And the question about water rights, there is no well on it. Black's Creek Irrigation District is in the vicinity, but he does not own a share in that, so they have, they have nothing out of that. And it's never been drilled for a well or anything like that, so it's totally dry. It's, it was dry-farmed approximately 40 years ago, and that, all the rocks are off of it, but then the sagebrush came back a little bit. Mr. Long has owned it for 20 years, and it just sat there, because it was in rural preservation. Boise City Police Officers are adjacent to it, and that's where they have their pistol range, training range, on that 320-acre parcel over there. That's a neighbor, so. And Mr. Lester has pretty much covered everything, so it's just bare ground. What Mr. Long would like to do is get that rezoned, so he can park, it's RV storage, it's those large Class A motorhomes. It'll be the big stuff, the top-end stuff. As we hear, there are several big subdivisions going in and out there in the Cuna area, and all those guys gotta park their toys somewhere. So, that's what we're looking for. It's strictly outdoor parking. There's no cover. There's, we're required to have one small building, that's the code, which is not a problem, but it's on gravel. It's all permeable, the soil. It's soiled down 16 feet until you hit basalt. We popped a couple test holes out there, and drainage is not a problem. There's about a 4% slope. The water soaks in the ground, and there's not a lot of water out there. It's a desert, so. Any further questions I could answer?
All right, any questions from the commission? Okay, you're Vince?
Pardon?
You're Vince?
I couldn't hear you.
What's your name again?
Say it again. I have these new hearing aids, and I apologize. I haven't got them fixed yet. There are too much technology for me.
Your name?
Oh, game. Oh, no, no, it's...
No, not game. Name.
Oh, my name?
Yeah.
Oh, Vince Boudel.
Okay, okay.
I said that when I started.
Yeah, all right.
Sorry.
All right, thank, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and Fred Long has signed up. Do you wish to speak, sir?
No, sir, Vince.
All right.
Spoke everything for him.
All right, good enough. We have no one else that signed up. Is there anyone else here that wants to speak? If not, is there any, any documents or anything that needs to be added to the record? I'd ask our staff.
Yes, Chairman, I'll add my presentation as an exhibit to the record.
Okay, thank you. I'll then close the public hearing on application 2023-01377-ZCDAMSP. Okay, it's now before us. If there's any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just, I think people need places to store their toys, and this seems like probably a pretty good appropriate place to do that.
Yeah, 1,000 toys, that'd be good.
So, I'm ready to offer a motion.
All right, I'd accept the motion. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve application 2023-01377-ZC-DA-MP-MSP, Frederick Long, based on the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the testimony we heard tonight.
Is there a second to the motion? I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. I'll now open the public hearing on application 2024-00396-V, Ben Tolman. We'll first have our staff, Amelia Haynes, give us a report. Go ahead, Amelia.
Chairman and commissioners, project number 2024-00396-V is a variance to allow an existing structure to encroach into the 25-foot rear setback. The property is located at 7187 South Pear Blossom Way and contains one acre in the rural residential district. It is considered a rural residence, as it was part of a non-farm subdivision created in 2003. The surrounding property is mostly other rural residences and agriculture. The property abuts Cuna city limits on the western boundary. The property is located between Cuna and Meridian city limits and is within Cuna's area of city impact. The applicant has had constructed an 800-square-foot shop without permits, which needed retroactive approval. It was discovered that while the main portion of the shop was outside of the rear 25-foot setback, the lean-to of the shop encroached into the rear setback. The applicant had the option of removing the encroaching portion of the structure or obtaining a variance to bring the property into compliance. The applicant has stated that the carport is approximately 700 square feet and is located 13 feet 6 inches from the rear property line. The applicant is requesting the board reduce the setback to allow for the carport to remain in place. In order for a variance to be granted, it must meet the three required findings. First, that the variance does not grant a right or special privilege that is not otherwise allowed in the base district. For rural residences, the side property lines abutting other rural residences may be reduced to 10 feet, and the property abutting the affected rear property line while currently being used for agriculture is zoned for Cuna's medium-density residential, which would likely allow for similar reduced setbacks once developed. Second, the variance relieves an undue hardship due to characteristics of the site. The driveway to the shop from West Wild Pear Street, along with the other existing features of the site, like the basketball court and landscaping, does not allow for the structure to be moved elsewhere. It would also be a financial burden to alter the structure to be within the setbacks. Lastly, the variance is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. We did not receive any comments in opposition from agencies, though we did receive one comment from a neighbor with concerns. The neighbor who commented in opposition stated that the site plan did not accurately show the location of the structure, which is much closer than 13 feet, and may be encroaching into the irrigation and sewer easement on the rear property line. There was also a comment that the plat for the Pear Blossom subdivision required a 100-foot setback from the rear property line, not 25 feet. The applicant responded with a statement and photos of the structure, which show how far the structure is located from the fence of the lot. Other neighbors also commented in support of the application, stating that the structure is not within the easement and is a good fit for the neighborhood. Regarding the 100-foot setback that is shown on the plat for the Pear Blossom subdivision, there is also a plat note stating that the building setback does not apply to accessory structures, therefore, the normal rear setback for the RR district would apply. Staff is recommending approval of this project. The board is encouraged to take any testimony given at this hearing into consideration before making their decision. This presentation will be known as exhibit number 28, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions from the board? Go ahead.
Just to clarify my understanding, what you said was that it could, there's a question of whether it does encroach on easements. There's a question of whether it does encroach on easements? And has that been clarified? Does it encroach on easements?
We would refer to the site plan, which does not encroach into the easement. If it was found that it was further in, we would go by what is on the site plan and require the structure to be reduced if that was the case.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay, thank you. I have the online... All right, we have... We'll get him on here for you. All right, we have the applicant, Ben Tolman.
Evening, Commissioners. Sorry, I had to get unmuted there. Thank you for consideration tonight.
Go ahead.
I'm Ben Tolman, I'm the homeowner, and again, appreciate your time tonight. The... It was a mistake on my part that... And not understanding that where the posts hit the ground, that that is considered part of the setback, which is why that carport exists, but it was engineered and built appropriately. And otherwise, I think Amelia has represented everything appropriately.
Okay. Any... Anything else?
No, I have multiple statements from neighbors, including the three who are direct line of sight to the shop, who have full support of the carport remaining. Otherwise, no.
Okay, any questions from the Commission?
Sure. So the one neighbor that's taking an issue with that, have you worked to resolve that between the two of you?
Yeah, definitely have tried to have conversations with Mr. Alloway, but he is not receptive to conversations. He did not attend the community notice meeting, he did not attend that.
And what are... What are the concerns he's bringing up to you?
Honestly, his concerns have nothing to do with the carport. He is unhappy about the fact that the shop has a metal roof. That's really his disagreement.
All right, any other questions? Go ahead.
Mr. Tolman, my question is, so where is this neighbor's location? Is anyone immediately behind, adjacent to your property, or another, further away?
No, he... His property is actually directly across the street from my property with no line of sight on the shop at all.
Okay, so it's in front of you, not behind you. Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, we have Aaron Furman. Is he online?
Everybody's online. We've reached out to him to see if he wants to talk. We can try to unmute him and see if he has something to say, but he hasn't indicated he wants to speak yet, so we'll try to unmute him real quick.
Okay.
Aaron, can you hear us?
Aaron, are you online?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
You can hear me fine. You want... You wish to testify on this application?
Hello?
Yep, we're here.
Hello?
Uh, yep. We are here waiting for your testimony.
Okay, I guess you can hear me. I apologize, I can't hear you anymore, but I'm the president of the HOA, and I just wanted to put my two cents in here that we have no problem with this carport. None of its direct neighbors do. It's not anywhere near the sewer lines or the irrigation lines, and yeah, it really... It fits within the neighborhood, and there's no issues with it from my point of view.
All right. I'd ask for questions, but I guess you can't hear us. Right? Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
All right, there are no questions?
Okay, I can hear you now, sorry.
All right, well, there are no questions from the Commission. We did hear you, unless you have anything else you'd like to add.
Nope, I apologize, just trying to figure out the audio, but nothing further to add. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. And there's no one else in the audience that wishes to speak on this application? Hearing none. Is there any... Amelia, are there any documents or anything that needs to be added to the record?
There are not.
Just one more question.
Go ahead.
It was my understanding, my notes, that this, if it's in the impact zone of Cuna, correct?
That's correct.
And if it were annexed, it would be in compliance with the zoning of Cuna?
I don't know that for sure, but many medium-density residential zones have similar rear setbacks, but I don't know for sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, so we have no additional documents need to be added. I will close the public hearing on application 2024-00396-V Ben Tolman. And who'd like to kick it off?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'm inclined to support it based on what I... The question I just asked, and there are no easement encroachments, the neighbors, the association supports it, so I'm inclined to support it.
All right, I'll accept the motion then.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application 2024-00396-V Ben Tolman, based on the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the discussion we've had tonight.
All right. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, we will next have... I will open the public hearing on application 2024-01642 CPA Ada County Development Services. We'll first hear from our staff, Brent Moore.
Okay. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Brent Moore with Ada County Development Services. Before you is a comprehensive plan text amendment to adopt the 2024 Capital Improvement Plan and Development Impact Fee Study for the Whitney Fire Protection District. The board has reviewed similar proposals recently for the Eagle Star North Ada County Fire Rescue Districts. So impact fees are collected on new construction to mitigate the associated capital costs required to serve it, so it is a way to help have growth pay for itself. And over the next 10 years, the study anticipates an increase of 2,267 households, 335,000 square feet of non-residential floor area within the boundaries of the district. And this map shows the boundaries of the Whitney Fire Protection District. You can tell it's a lot of southwest Boise and some pieces to the southeast of Boise. And here's an overview of the district's 10-year growth-related needs, which would include a new fire station, a new fire engine, and a new water tender, which is a truck that transports water. And here are the new impact fees, which the study determined would need to be charged on new development in order to mitigate growth-related capital costs. So different amounts are proposed by building type based on their projected impact to the district. And then just wanted to show a summary of the application process to date. The application, it is a comprehensive plan text amendment, so it was transmitted to all applicable agencies. Public service announcement was issued. Two legal notices were published prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which recommended approval, and then the process repeated again before the hearing tonight. And there have been no concerns or comments in opposition. And as detailed in the findings, staff finds the application to be in conformance with state statute and Ada County Code, and is recommending approval. Additionally, the Ada County Planning and Zoning Commission and Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee have both reviewed the application and recommended approval as well. And then just to note that this hearing to amend the fire district portion of the comprehensive plan is also a hearing pursuant to Idaho Code Section 67-82063 to consider approval of the new capital improvement plan. This concludes my presentation, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions? No questions? Are you speaking for the applicant?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, no, Ada County is the applicant, so that's us.
Okay. All right. I saw no one here to testify on this application, so without any further, unless there's anyone here, is there anything that needs to be added to the record?
Mr. Chair, my presentation will be Exhibit Number 16.
Okay. All right, well, then I will close the public hearing on application 2024-01642 CPA. And call for motion.
Mr. Chair?
More discussion?
I'm willing to make a motion to approve, so...
Okay.
I will move to approve application number 2024-01642-CPA Ada County Development Services based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and the testimony heard tonight.
I second the motion.
Okay. You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, now we have another item, Ada County Title 10 and Collection of Fire District Impact Fees.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Brent Moore with Development Services. Again, this is just the associated zoning ordinance amendment that goes along with that comprehensive plan amendment, so this will just adopt these fee amounts into Title 10 of Ada County Code where all the other fire impact fees are.
Okay. Are there any...
And, sorry, yeah, nothing else to add, just staff is recommending approval, we are the applicant again on this one.
All right. Any questions for the... From the board? Hearing... You have a question? Hearing none? I'll close the public hearing on the Ada County Title 10 and Collection of Fire Permanent Fees. Hearing being closed, I accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the... An ordinance amending Ada County Code Title 10, Chapter 1, to amend Section 10-13C to adopt new impact fees for residential industrial retail office and industrial uses for the Whitney Fire Protection District and providing for an effective date and publication.
I'll second that.
Okay. There's... You've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, I will open the public hearing on application 2024-01653-VAC Greg Hyatt. Our staff, Amelia Haynes, will give us a report, and then we'll hear from the applicant. Go ahead, Amelia.
Chairman and Commissioners, project number 2024-01653-V-AC is a variance and accessory use application to construct an accessory structure in the rear setback. The property is located at 2,300 West Cogburn Street and contains about 1.3 acres in the rural residential district. The property is considered a rural residence as it was part of a non-farm subdivision created in 1999. The surrounding uses are mostly other rural residences and undeveloped land in the Cuna city limits. The property and subdivision is located in mostly... It's mostly surrounded by Cuna city limits and is within Cuna's area of city impact. The applicant is proposing to construct an accessory structure to be used to store a personal RV and other household items. The proposed location is 10 feet from the side property line and 15 feet from the rear. The rear property line of a rural residence is 25 feet. The main reason for the applicant's request is that the location is needed to maneuver an RV into the bay of the garage without tearing down the existing barn, which would be accomplished with a reduced setback to 15 feet at the rear. In order for a variance to be granted, the application must meet the three required findings. First, that the variance does not grant a right or special privilege that is not otherwise allowed in the base district. The side setbacks for rural residences next to other rural residences allows for a 10-foot setback, and while this property is affecting the rear setback, the property that shares this property line to the north has that 10-foot setback because it's their side property line, not the rear. Second, the variance relieves an undue hardship due to characteristics of the site. The current 25-foot setbacks do not allow room for an RV turnaround. Last, the variance cannot be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. No comments in opposition from agencies or neighbors were received for this application. The neighbor to the north has also submitted a comment included in the submittals that they are in support of the variance. Staff is recommending approval of project... Of this project. The board is encouraged to take any testimony presented at this hearing into consideration before making their decision. This presentation will be known as Exhibit Number 30, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions for the staff from the board?
No.
No questions, thank you. Is the applicant here? Do you wish to speak?
Sure. Thanks, Commissioners. My name is Greg Hyatt, and I own the property, and basically I'm here just in case you had additional questions, to be honest. You're aware that the person to the north of me signed off on it, everybody's wanted me to put it shopping for a while, so I just wanted to comply with them, and the previous people before me, I know they were putting up RV spaces for 1,000. I just want one, so I'm hoping that's acceptable, and I appreciate your thought on this matter.
All right, any questions? All right, no questions, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Amelia, are there any documents we need to add to the record?
There are not.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing on application 2024-01653-VAC. And ask the board if we have any... If you have any questions, or if you want to discuss this at all, or call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'll... I'm inclined to support this, and I'm ready to offer a motion.
I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve application 2024-01653-V-AC Greg Hyatt, based on the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the discussion this night.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, now I'll open the public hearing on application 2024-01813VCLMSP Maria Arroya. We'll ask our staff, Brent Danielson, to give us a report. Go ahead, Brent.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 2024-01813-V-CU-MSP is a conditional use, a master site plan for a contractor's yard, and a variance to the minimum property size for a contractor's yard and for a contractor's shop to be within 50 feet of an abutting property. The property is generally located between the city of Meridian and the city of Cuna and is a mile east of the Canyon County line. The property is located at 4869 South Black Cat Road at the corner of West Amity Road and South Black Cat, and contains 4.19 acres in the rural-urban transition district. The contractor's yard is for a landscaping business. The contractor's yard will have three employees, and the proposed days and hours of operation will be Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The property has an 1,800-square-foot pole building, a barn dominium shop, which was constructed in 2022. Most of the barn dominium consists of a shop, but a portion of the structure consists of a small living quarters. The applicant has plans in the future to build a new single-family dwelling on the property, which is shown towards the northern part of the lot. The applicant is planning to utilize a portion of the barn dominium shop for some storage of the landscape equipment such as lawn mowers, edger, trencher, shovels, and rakes. There are two variances associated with the contractor's yard. The first variance is for a contractor's yard in the rural or residential base districts to be on property that is less than five acres in size. The second variance is for a contractor's yard in a rural or residential base district to have a structure less than 50 feet from any property line. The subject property is lot 2 of the Amity Ranch subdivision. The Amity Ranch subdivision was plaid in 1973. On the subdivision plot you see here, the professional... On the subdivision plot, you see here, the professional land surveyor had put acreages on the platte for each lot in the subdivision. For the subject property, the surveyor had denoted that this lot is 5.1265 acres on the platte. However, the actual acreage itself is actually 4.19 acres. In further investigating the discrepancy between the acreage shown on the platte and the actual acreage, it appears that the professional land surveyor had calculated the lot areas in the subdivision by measuring out to the center lines of West Amity Road and South Black Cat Road. In order to grant three findings, in order to grant variance, three findings need to be made. One, the first finding is the variance should not grant right or special privilege that is not otherwise allowed in the base district. Two, the variance relieves an undue hardship due characteristics of the site. And three, the variance should not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Staff finds that the first variance for the property size of the contractor's yard does not constitute a granting of a special right or privilege based on the unique history of how this lot was created in 1973. In addition, there are other contractor's yards within Ada County that have been approved on properties that are under five acres. Staff finds that the second variance for the contractor's yard to have a structure less than 50 feet from any property line does constitute a special right and privilege or alternative locations on the property that could meet the required 50-foot setback where equipment may be stored for the contractor's yard. Staff finds that there is an undue hardship that exists due to characteristics of the site that justify the granting of the first variance to allow the contractor's yard on a property that is less than five acres in size. As I had mentioned before, there is a discrepancy between the acreage written on the platte and the actual acreage of the lot. It appears that the professional land surveyor had calculated the lot areas in the subdivision by measuring out to the center line of West Amity Road and South Black Cat Road. Prior to the subdivision, the deeds for the parent parcel had the legal description of the northeast quarter, of the northeast quarter of Section 33 of Township 3 North, Range 1 West. Thus, the legal description for the parent parcel indicated that the property boundary went to the section line, which is the center line of West Amity Road and South Black Cat Road. Staff finds that there is no undue hardship, that no undue hardship exists due to characteristic of the site to justify the granting of the second variance for the contractor's yard to be within 50 feet of an abutting property. Staff finds that both variances are not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Information regarding the variances was transmitted to affected public agencies charged with the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare, and none of the agencies have indicated that the variances would be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. There are no public comments received on this application, and none of the agencies raised any concerns or objections regarding this application. Staff finds that the conditional use of master site plan applications, along with the first variance, to allow for a contractor's yard in a rural or residential base district to be on property that is less than five acres in size, complies with Ada County Code. However, staff finds that the second variance for a contractor's yard in a rural or residential base district to have a structure less than 50 feet from any property line abutting other property does not comply with Ada County Code, and I'll stand for any questions.
Yeah, are there any questions from the Commission? Go ahead.
I would. So the clarification is when this was plotted back in '73, or whenever it was, that's when the error was made in terms of the size of this particular lot, correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daly, that is correct.
So, and it wasn't, wasn't noted until now?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daly, that is correct. So one of the specific use standards for the contractor's yard is that that five-acre minimum parcel size it has to be on. And so when the applicant came in to get that approval, that's kind of when we discovered that we had this discrepancy between what's shown on the platte here and what the actual acreage is.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, no other questions. Is the applicant here? Come on down.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Maria Arroyo, and I'm here to tell you guys how important it is for my husband and I to get approval for that contractor's yard. As Mr. Danielle Nelson said, when we bought this property almost a decade ago, my husband and I, we were told that it was five point some acres. We had our dream to have that as for my husband contractor's yard, because he's been on business since 2004. He has a landscape, landscaping business, and trying to be in the neighborhood is very hard. So we were saving to buy this property and make payments, and we didn't know that we didn't have that much property until it was discovered in the deed that we only have 4.19. It is important for us to, to have that approval, because we had our neighborhood meeting, and we, I had my neighbors concerned that I want, they want us to be there, build a house, and have like more like a, more like a, not a contractor's yard, because my husband doesn't have any retails there. He just stores the trucks, lawn mowers, equipment, but more like being there and be more like a, like a neighbor, like is there. Like Amity Ranch, just built like a house, my dream house that I have always dreamed, and also be my husband's, a little storage there. We are committed to maintain the property clean, landscape, and have, consider our neighbors to have everything, the view. And we've also been told that with the future, maybe 2036, I believe, we were going to have expansion from the Amity Road in Black Cat. We also going to have that in, in mind by building this house, which is going to be a little bit hard, having a house there too. But we are willing to, if we get approval for this, to take the risk, you know, to have a lot of, because I had one neighbor saying, are you going to have, are you going to be okay to having all that noise around? I was like, I think so, because I live in Black Cat right now, and it's getting really bad, too. So I don't know if you have any questions or concerns.
Are there any questions from the Commission? Any questions? Go ahead.
So just to clarify, your decision of what the staff said and what you're understanding. So when you bought the property, you thought it was?
It was promoted when we bought it. It was 5.5, I believe, or 5.2 acres when we bought it. We didn't know we didn't have five acres. My husband and I, we always thought it was five. And as he described, we were, we were told that if the future, because we didn't use it right away for my husband's storage, to store the trucks and to build anything, because it was empty. We didn't have water. We didn't have a safety tank, and we didn't have electricity. 2019, we worked really hard to get a will there. Then in 2020, when COVID hit, it was very hard to get electricity there. And we still did not know that we didn't have the five acres. So we wouldn't done what we have done there, because it was discovered there was less than five acres.
All right, any other questions?
No, not right now.
Any questions? Go ahead.
So our staff is recommending denial of the variance for being within 50 feet of an abutting property, and they are suggesting you could build it somewhere else on the property. So could you address that issue?
Yes, we will commit with, with the city limits or the suggestions to build not as close to what it is on the paper, the 50 feet that it, this require.
Sure.
Go ahead.
So you're saying you are able to build it within the 50 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I believe so.
Question to staff. Has that been communicated to staff at this point?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, we have an existing structure that's on the property that complies with code currently for essentially a residential structure. It's got some living space in it. Commonly called the barn dominium. And I believe, Brent can kind of add to this, but I believe that the applicant ideally would like to use that structure as part of their contractor's yard to store equipment. However, our code requires any structure that's going to be used as part of the contractor's yard to be set back 50 feet. So essentially, what Brent's recommending is that this building not be used as part of the contractor's yard, but remain as it is, a residential structure. So yeah, so Brent has that mixed, mixed recommendation. Yeah, if you do decide after listening to the testimony that you, you want to approve that aspect as well, we would ask you, you table to elaborate time to revise findings.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Ma'am, was that your understanding of the situation?
Yeah, that's also another issue we got. I did not discover that when we submit the application with health and welfare, when we build a shop, our person, contractor, that did the shop, some reason this, this last year is when I, I think it was this year, January, I discovered that they sent me a bill from the Ada County that I owed some taxes, which I pay my taxes in November, and they said that it was instruction for living. I did not apply for a living instruction. It was just to build a shop for my husband to store the tools and the equipment that he used. I don't know what it was used. I called personally to the Ada County, and they said, oh, because you have a house, a living property there. And I was like, no, I don't have any living property. We built a bathroom, and that's why we thought that was more expensive, that the taxes was raised because of that reason. They sent me a bill for almost $300 more than why I usually pay. I don't recall right now how much I pay every year, but it's like close to $300, $3,000 every year. And this bill got me a surprise in January. So that's where all the misunderstanding was. So that's not for living. That shop was meant to just build for my husband, store all the his equipment and all the machines that he used, which is just like lawn mowers and trimmers and things like that.
Sometimes you can have the assessor come out to your property and inspect it if you think they made a mistake about whether it's a living quarters or a shed, but that's a different, different department than what we have here today.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, Commissioners, again, in this instance, there is no existing home on the property. So we wouldn't be able to issue a permit for an accessory structure unless it included the residential space and was essentially considered a dwelling. So that's probably, that's not really a concern for, for us. The concern is that the code calls for any structure that's going to be used as part of the contractor's yard to be set back a certain distance, 50 feet. So certainly, the structure can remain. It can be used for personal use. But again, Mr. Danielson's recommendation is that anything that's going to be dedicated for use as part of the contractor's yard, anything new be set back 50 feet unless you determine that there's a cause to grant the variance to use this existing structure as it is.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
It sounds like she's saying the assessor's office determined it was a residential and taxed it for that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, again, we wouldn't be able to issue a permit for that structure unless it was a dwelling. So it's our understanding that it had some residential component to allow us to issue the permit. And so that's probably where the assessor's like, maybe assessing it as a residential structure. And again, that's no concern for us from a zoning perspective. That's certainly acceptable, and it meets applicable setbacks for that structure and its intended use. But it's converting it into use with the contractor's yard where we run into the, the challenge.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So one of the grounds for us to issue a variance, if it is a hardship to the applicant to not grant the, the variance, so can you talk about if this would be an undue hardship if we did not grant the variance?
It's going to be very hard, because we live in a neighborhood right now, 10-mile in Jushtick. My husband has, has his business since 2004, as I have said. And living in a neighborhood is really hard to keep trucks and tools and store equipment. We have a really good relationship with our neighbors, and we've been very lucky. But I don't know how long we're going to have that lucky to have. He's growing, and he has more equipment, and we, like I said, we didn't know anything about this. We put our hands in the contractor, knowing that they were able to have this permits and everything built with what it was asked. But we didn't have the education to review all the plans and everything before we, they submit that stuff. We only did give, give them the payment. So it will be really hard for my husband and I to have this denial, because we will have to sell the property. We already, like I have said, put, built the shop. 2019, we did it well. We did electricity in 2020. And trust me, it was so tough for me, because I'm a nurse, I'm a nurse, and I was working on the hospital 13 to 16 hours a day, and trying to deal with electricity and all the stuff that I have to deal on my work. And then I had call the guy that I was working with, Idaho Power, and limitations with contact. It was very tough. It took me almost a year and a half to get that project done. And like I said, I don't know. It's, it's, it's been taking us a decade, 10 years, to get this done. And now that we discovered that we don't have the five acres, it's even worse for us. We will have to sell our prior home, sell this property with all what we have done, and try to find something else. Yeah, so it's going to be a lot of arrangements.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
How, how much of an, this is for staff, how much of an infringement on the 50 feet is it?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daly, the barn dominium's kind of at an angle. So I think one part of the barn dominium is about 33 feet from the property line, and the other one is about like about 26, 27 feet.
So it's about, about half the distance?
Yes.
Should be.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
And when was the building built?
2022.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We have a couple other. Does Miguel wish to speak?
I think he's, he's okay.
Okay. There's a Anastasia Zalewski. Don't want to speak? How about Roushan Zalewski?
No, he's not.
Okay, no speak. All right, so there's no one else wish to speak unless our marshal wished to speak? All right, so is there any other documents or anything that needs to be added to the record?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my presentation will be exhibit number 28.
All right, before they close the public hearing, are there any questions of staff or anything before we?
I have, I have.
Go ahead.
So the neighbor comments?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daly, we did not receive any neighbor comments on this application.
Okay. Okay, well then, without, I will close the public hearing on application 2024-01813VCUMSP. And anyone want to kick it off?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think I'm inclined to, to grant the first variance on, based on staff's recommendation and the testimony we've heard, and then, as well as the second variance, I, I think I'm leaning towards approving that one as well, based on the testimony regarding hardship.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, I'm inclined to do the same thing, actually.
Okay. Then that would require that we table the thing, give us a chance to write up some new findings of fact, and give us a date.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we would recommend November 19th, the open business meeting.
November 19th. All right. I'll accept the motion.
All right.
Give this, give staff clear, clear direction and make a motion for that to table.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to table application number 202401-813-V-CU-MSP, Maria Arroyo, to November 19th, 2024, with instructions to staff to amend the findings to support an approval of both variances, based on the testimony we've heard this evening.
I second the motion.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other business needs to be brought before the, the Commission while we're here? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you.